Good evening. I call the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Regular Board Meeting of Richland Two Board of Trustees to order. The agenda for tonight's meeting has been published and made available. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I move to approve the agenda for the January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Regular Board Meeting.
Has been made by Mr. Trapp. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp and seconded by Mr. Dennis to approve the agenda. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. Is everyone logged on? Okay, board members, please vote. It has not come up. Yes, I'm voting in affirmative. Okay, so we'll just take the vote and I'll do that. The vote is seven yes, zero no. Mrs. Nash is on her way, so the motion passes. We will now move to item three point one, Executive Session. May I have a motion to go into Executive Session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to convene an executive session for the purpose of discussing a contractual matter regarding property easement, receipt of legal advice regarding capital project budgets, student appeals, apparent appeal, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation and goals.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. May I have a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Williams to go into Executive Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? Board members, please vote. And my vote is yes. It's not coming up. The motion is six yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now enter into Executive Session. I do want to apologize that we're just coming out of Executive Session. So may I please have a motion to end the executive session?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move that we adjourned Executive Session at seven thirteen P. M. and resume Public Session.
A motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp to end Executive Session at seven thirteen P. M. and resume Public Session. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. Has everyone voted? We're just waiting for the vote. The vote is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. Now, before we actually go into Inspirational Moment, I do want to apologize to our listeners, viewers, online, as well as the people here. We normally do not come out this late, so really accept our apology. We had more parent hearings than we normally have, and if you know this board, we really want to listen, we really care, and we want to make sure that we're doing the best interest for all of our students as they come before us. So we spend a little more time in meeting with parents and with students, and I think on any night I'll come out late to make sure that parents and students feel that they've been heard, and that's our responsibility as board members. So I did want to make that comment. Now, with that being said, we will now move on to Inspirational Moment, and I will introduce our speaker this evening. Our speaker for the Inspirational Moment this evening is Nathaniel Canfall, Jr. He's born and raised in Savannah, Georgia, and raised on Hilton Head Island, South Carolina, a proud graduate of Benedict College, I know we'll get some claps on that, and Webster University. He earned his BA in therapeutic recreation and MA in counseling with honors. As a former director of admissions at Allen University, Mr. Canfall led efforts to attract top students, foster campus unity, and create impactful programs like Real Talk to reduce violence and man-to-man, to support at-risk African-American males. For the past eleven years, he has thrived as an award-winning realtor, helping clients achieve their real estate goals with professionalism and care. Guided by his faith and the belief that noble service equals godly blessings, Mr. Canfall continues to inspire through his dedication to excellence and service. I present to you all Mr. Nathaniel Canfall.
Good evening to all. Thank you all for having me. Thank you for the introduction as well. My reason being here today is really just to say to everyone that as executives and professionals and decision-makers for Richland School District Two, your position is very important, and I wanted just to provide a little level of inspiration in terms of just the position of everyone. As a student myself, growing up, you know, I was every product of a student you all can imagine, every product that you can imagine. And with good teachers, good guidance, failing moments, I got to a point of development. But one of the greatest moments that I want to share with y'all, because I want to make it short, one of the greatest moments that I want to share with you all is this moment. After I came out of a very diverse situation, bad situation in my life, I went on to Benedict College. And while I attended Benedict College, you know, I was an older student, I was twenty-four at the time, freshman at school, not really know how I'm going to make it. I'm an independent student, so I'm in a complex position. And I was at the point where I didn't know what to do. So I was in ROTC, and from ROTC, after PT was over, I walked over to the cafeteria and went to cafeteria and went to go eat. And the lady in the cafeteria, she walked over to me, she said, "Young man, I don't know what's going on with you, but I'm going to look for you tomorrow." She don't know what that did for my life, just those simple words. I was at a moment where my decision wasn't even my own. I was at a period where I couldn't even rationalize my own responsibility or accountability to my own self. I was in the clouds. But those words vibrated. She said, "I'm going to see you tomorrow." For a week straight, I walked in that cafeteria, and she said, "Now, I see, I'm going to look for you tomorrow. I'm going to look for you tomorrow." And that propelled me to complete the difficulty of my education when I was at a very crushing moment. And the reason why I say that is to say this as a school board and all those present, all those who are by Zoom and so forth, that you all serve a very strong position for our youth, especially right now in time. Kind words, purpose, consistency, and just having a perception to care, to see what you don't even know what you're seeing. Just observation is big, is key. Your words is big, it's key. How you position yourself with children that you cannot see behind those doors to see what they come into school with. You don't have no authority to see that. But what you do have the authority to see is your effect on them if you choose to give them you. And I just ask that everyone take that level of responsibility and that definitive commitment to uphold the standards that make education what it is. Education is a product that develops, it transcends. And if you don't see yourself as a person that transcends and creates a monument of greatness through the expectation of nothingness, you don't have nothing that you can expect but just the ability to do your best and hope that hope takes form in someone and they become an expression of your work, of your hope, your faith. So that's really all I want to say. Once again, I thank you all for having me. I made it short. You know, I could have went a long road, but I made it short. So I hope y'all don't mind. But I think at this time I need to leave the pleasures of leisure. If y'all will stand, please. Pleasures and pleasures to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you so much, Mr. Canfall. And as a point of privilege, I'm going to share this. I met Mr. Canfall many, many years ago. But a few weeks ago, he reached out to me and he shared his story with me, and I was touched by his story because that cafeteria lady that he spoke of was my mom. And you guys know how I feel about cafeteria workers, bus drivers, teacher assistants, because everyone matters. Every position is an important position. There are no big I's and little u's. So it touched my heart. I didn't cry this evening. I cried when he told me that. Because we have to remember to treat everyone with kindness, and you never know what your words will do. And the words of my mother saved him just by saying, "I plan to see, I hope to see you tomorrow," encouraged him to want to come to class because he knew my mother was looking for him. And then I took that, because you know, as teachers, we always have a teachable moment. Dr. Franklin, she going to make sure you have one. And I took that and I thought about, we're getting ready to talk about absenteeism. That's what he could have had at Benedict College had he not received the inspiration. So I hope that this touch a lot of us, so we can encourage students, because we never know what they're going through. And everyone in the building play a part in encouraging someone. So to my cafeteria workers, you know how I love you. To my bus drivers, teacher assistants, and to everyone in the building, you are important, and thank you for making our students feel that way. So with that being said, thank you so much, and we will move on. We would now go to item five point one, Special Recognition. The agenda item in this session is a special recognition of Mrs. Nikki Porter, the Vice Chair, Richland District Two School Board. Ms. Porter was elected to serve as the new South Carolina School Board Association Region Eight Director for Richland County at the South Carolina School Board Association Annual Business Meeting held Saturday, December seventh, in Charleston. The Assembly is a part of the Association Legislative Activacy Conference each year, which serves as the precursor to the upcoming legislative section. Mrs. Porter will represent Richland School District One and Richland School District Two. So we would like to ask Ms. Porter to come to the front because we do have a certificate for you. So Ms. Porter, if you would go to the front, please. So thank you and congratulations, Ms. Porter. We are very proud of you. Nate, you don't have to stay. If you don't like, feel free to leave out at any time. Don't feel obligated to stay. We will now move to item six point one, Consent Agenda. May I please have a motion regarding the approval of the consent agenda?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the consent agenda for January the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Regular Board Meeting.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will move to seven point one, Public Participation. It's the new year, and I guess everyone is tired. No one is here for public participation. So we are going to continue to move forward. And I forgot something when I was saying about the custodians and the cafeteria workers. Security guard matters too. I see security guards and SROs as well, so let's add them to the list. We will now move to eight point zero, Voting on Executive Items, Session Items. May I please have a motion on a contractual matter regarding property easement?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move to authorize the superintendent to proceed with the property transactions discussed in Executive Session to facilitate the transfer of Red Hawk Way to Richland County and to allow Dominion Energy to obtain an easement to continue maintaining the streetlights along Red Hawk Way, with all documents being made available to the public once the transactions have been completed.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, is there any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item eight point two, Capital Projects Budget Update. May I please have a motion regarding the capital projects budget update?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Nash?
I move to approve and ratify the updated construction budgets for the individual construction projects that were presented to the board during its meeting on January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-four, and provide it to us again tonight.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Nash and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item eight point three, Student Appeals. May I please have a motion regarding student appeals?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
I move to take no action for student number one.
The motion has been made for student number one. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Ms. Dennis and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I have a motion for student number two?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
I move to deny the appeal for student number two.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? Board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. May I have a motion for student number three?
Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
I move to deny the appeal for student number three.
The motion has been made to deny student number three. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Is there any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is two yes, five no. The motion fails. May I have a motion for student number three?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move that student number three attend Blithwood Academy for the remainder of the year.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter for student number three. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mr. Trapp. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? CNN, please vote. The motion is six yes, one no. The motion passes. We will now move to student number four. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
I move to deny the appeal for student four.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. Are we waiting on? Oh, okay. The motion is six no, one yes. The motion fails. May I have a motion for student number four?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to send the student number four to Blithwood Academy for the remainder of the year.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is six yes, one no. The motion passes. May I have a motion for student number five?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis?
I move to deny the appeal for student number five.
The motion has been made for student number five. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mr. Dennis for student number five and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Any discussion? Board members, any discussion? CNN, please cast your vote. The motion is seven yes, one no. The motion passes. We will now move to item eight point four, Parent Appeal. May I please have a motion regarding the parent appeal?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Williams?
I move to uphold the parent appeal. Or grant the parent appeal.
Okay. The motion has been made to grant the parent appeal. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Williams and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Board members, any discussion? The motion has been made by Mrs. Williams and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Board members, any discussion? Any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 8.5, Student Admission Request into the Adults Education Program. May I please have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to approve the student admission request into the district's adult education program for students one and two.
The motion has been made for students one and two. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington for students one and two and seconded by Mr. Dennis. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? CNN, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 8.6, Employment Recommendations and Certified Releases. May I please have a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Trapp?
I move to approve the employment recommendations and certified releases as presented.
The motion has been made by Mr. Trapp. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Trapp and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? CNN, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We will now move to item 8.7, Personnel Matter Regarding the Superintendent's Evaluation Goal. May I please have a motion on the personnel matter regarding the superintendent's evaluation goal?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter?
I move that no action be taken on the superintendent's evaluation goals.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Porter and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? I would just make a note that we should not have been taking a motion on this, but because it's on the agenda, we are taking a motion to not take a motion on here to make sure that we are in line. So that's why we have to do this because it should not have been on here. So with that being said, board members, please vote. The motion is seven yes, zero no. The motion passes. We would now move to new business, no action requested. Item 9.1, Review and Signing of the South Carolina School Boards Association Ethical Principles. And I would start each year, by the way, this is School Board Appreciation Month, January, in case you did not know. So each year, we have to sign the ethical principles. Not only should we sign them, we should do what? Follow them. Lead by example. So with that being said, there are some quotes and some information that reminds us of what our job duties are. So I have divided this up so we will share. I will begin, "As members of the Board of Richland School District Two, we pledge our efforts to improve public education in our community, and we solemnly try to..."
Represent the interest of the entire district when making decisions and to rely on available facts and on our judgment rather than on individuals or special interest groups. Understand the proper role of the Board to set policies governing the district and to hire the chief administrator, administrative officer, to carry out these policies.
Encourage an open exchange of ideas by all Board members during the decision-making process. Seek regular communications between the Board and students, staff, and all segments of the community.
Attend all Board meetings to study issues facing the Board and to enact policies and official actions only after full discussion at such meetings. Work with other Board members in a conscientious and courteous manner, befitting the public trust placed in the position of the school board trustee.
Communicate concerns and public reaction to Board policies and school programs, to the superintendent, and to other Board members in a professional manner. Support employment of the persons best qualified for staff positions and to ensure a regular and impartial evaluation of all staff.
Avoid conflicts of interest and to refrain from using our Board positions for personal or partisan gain. Encourage recognition of the achievements of students and staff and of the involvement of community residents.
Support legislation and funding which will improve the educational opportunities and environment for students and staff. Take no individual action which would compromise the integrity of the Board or administration and to respect the confidentiality of information that is privileged under the Freedom of Information Act.
Study current educational issues and to participate in training programs such as those offered through the South Carolina School Boards Association and make our district educational setting the best possible to encourage all students to achieve and to love learning. With that said, board members, if we can all go to the front table and we're going to sign that we're going to follow these principles, and then we will take a photo. Board members, please join me in the front. Board members, now we will move to item 9.2, People's Services Report. I will now turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Dr. Suber and Ms. Reagans to please come to the podium. Board members, we are going to be presenting some very critical information around chronic absenteeism, which is one of the focuses for the district. And so at this particular point, I will turn it over to our executive director, Dr. Sean Suber.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Dr. Moore. Tonight, we're going to have our public, our Pup- our Pupils Services Report by Vernda Reagans, who is our lead attendance interventionist. Ms. Reagans.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Moore. Thank you all so much for this opportunity to present this chronic absenteeism data. So as a reminder, chronic absenteeism is when a student misses 10% of their enrollment period, and this includes all types of absences. So if a student is enrolled with us for the entire school year and misses 18 days, they will be considered as chronically absent. And chronic absenteeism focuses on the fact that a student is missing instruction and valuable time in class regardless of the reason why. Schools across the country were required to track and monitor chronic absenteeism starting in the 2017-2018 school year. As you all can see, COVID had a tremendous impact on our chronic absenteeism numbers, and those numbers have continued to increase. During the 22-23 school year, we hired five attendance interventionists and began working with all schools to address their need to provide tiered attendance interventions, and we're very proud of the almost 3% decrease from the 22-23 to the 23-24 school year, and we hope to see, to continue to see a continuous decrease. This afternoon, we received a state, oh, wait a minute, I'm sorry, y'all. So this afternoon, we received the state chronic absenteeism data, and the state of South Carolina average is 21.64%, so we're still well below the state average at 18.07%. So as of our 90th day this year, we are slightly higher than we would like to be, and during the second semester, we tend to see higher numbers as well. So when we look at our pupils in poverty of the chronically absent students in each level, 84.9% are in elementary school, 81.3% are in middle school, and 77.1% are in high school. So we know that our schools with higher poverty rates will also have higher rates of chronic absenteeism. As you can see with this data, ninth grade has the highest rate of chronic absenteeism. This has been the case in our district for several years. I also want to point out our 12th grade students have the highest second rate of chronic absenteeism, and also our kindergarten students are in the top five. Research has shown that parents often don't believe their earlier grades are as impactful when students miss school. However, we know that those foundational years are very important. So looking at our SC Ready, the percentage of chronically absent students who took SC Ready that did not meet or are approaching really affected our sixth and seventh grade students. They were the ones who, those students had the highest rate of not meeting and approaching. So there are many contributing factors that impact attendance rates. Some examples of those are having a welcoming school environment, poverty rates, belonging and connectedness to schools, and social emotional wellness, along with other things. So during our presentation last school year, there were questions about root causes of chronic absenteeism, and so we asked administrators and social workers who completed attendance intervention plans with families to share the root causes of absences based off of the information they received from the AIP meeting. And so this was a small sample size of 45 students who had those AIPs completed. And as you can see, 33% of the cases reported acute illnesses as the major contributing factor for their excessive absences. Almost 30% stated that their parents' work schedule, conflicts with supporting and assuring students get to school. 24% identified transportation as a barrier, such as student misses the bus and the parent doesn't have transportation or a car to get the student to school. So the reason why a student has excessive absences will vary and is typically highly individualized to that family. However, oftentimes, the barriers they face aren't issues that the school district can assist with, but they are challenges beyond the control of our systems. So how do we, how do we address chronic absenteeism? National research tells us there are things we can do at a system level that will impact the reduction of absences. A district must have comprehensive responses and strategies that are supported and enforced at all levels of the district system. We have to provide tiered attendance interventions just like we do for behavior and academics. We have to recognize that building a strong Tier One is going to be most effective, and we have to make data-informed decisions. And this is an area where we have shown growth with the work of our attendance interventionists who ensure schools have reliable and frequent attendance data reports. So when we look at our attendance systems and tiered interventions, our systems come along with attendance interventionists, hiring those attendance interventionists, having attendance administrators, having school attendance teams, effective training and onboarding, data monitoring, and common language and expectations. When we look at our Tier One interventions, they have a focus on school-wide interventions that are available to all students, such as Attendance Matters campaigns, district and school initiatives, classroom lessons, perfect and improved attendance, recognition, and school data meetings. When we move to our Tier Two interventions, they are more specific to individual students, such as success plans, parent meetings, seat time recovery in small groups. Our Tier Three interventions include more directed interventions that involve the family, and Tier Four interventions involve outside agency involvement, such as truancy court. So I want to introduce our two attendance interventionists, Ms. Jenina Hayes, oh, I'm sorry, y'all. I'm sorry, y'all. I missed two whole slides. I am so sorry.
You shouldn't have said anything. We wouldn't have noticed because you addressed so much.
Okay, well, let me keep moving.
You're doing great. You're doing great.
Okay, our two interventionists, Ms. Jenina Hayes and Venesia Johnson, if y'all will stand up. And they have been working very hard in making sure that the schools have attendance teams in place and are meeting regularly. Thank you all for sustaining these positions, and also thanks to the Deodas Grant. We are in the process of hiring a new interventionist to bring to the team. So next, let's talk about Attendance Spirit Week. Attendance Spirit Week is almost our kickoff to promoting attendance in our schools. Faculty, staff, students, everyone really jump on board. They get excited about Decades Day or Sop Day, and so it's just a real fun way for us to get everybody involved and just kick off our discussions about attendance. So where do we go from here? As we continue to address chronic absenteeism, we have to continue focusing on our attendance systems and tiered interventions. We have to remember that poverty rates will continue to impact our data and that social emotional wellness and creating a culture of belonging are all important to creating a culture where attendance matters. This concludes my presentation, and thank you all so much for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Reagan, and thank you to the team that put this presentation together. Board and for the public, I want to emphasize one point or two points in particular that Ms. Reagan brought up. When we had our budget conversation last year, the Board allocated resources for us to maintain our attendance interventionists. That position was originally funded through the ESAR dollars, but the Board was committed to ensuring that we had the people on board to help our students and our families, because a kindergartner doesn't decide if they're going to go to school. To help, to help with this, with this work. And so while we are very pleased that we are below the state average at the 18.7, we're still not happy with that because we want every child in school every day so that they can receive the learning. But I want everybody in the audience to know, this is a result of the Board's effort by funding those positions. So thank you. And with that, I'll open- And with that, I'll open it up for questions.
Board members, are there any questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Porter.
I just wanted to know, there's a slide with the root causes of excessive absences. I wanted to know where we get that data from.
We did a small sample of 45 students who had recently had attendance intervention plans done. So that information came from social workers and attendance administrators, the ones who actually do attendance intervention plans.
Okay, thank you.
Board members, are there any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Do we know how many truancy court cases we've had in the district in the past year? Getting that high into it?
This year, this school year, I know we attended court in November, and we took four students at that time. And we have court again January 22nd, and I think we have four, four more.
Okay, tha- thank you.
Board members, any other questions? If not, I have, slow down, Mr. Dr. Suber. I have just a few questions. When I was looking at the slides, I was thinking about the celebrations that you guys actually have for attendance. And I guess my question would be, and Dr. Suber, you remember this, when we were at Rice Creek, we had PBIS, so we could celebrate those things. What type of incentives do we have for high schools? And I'm asking that in particular, because I think about myself and many of you probably in the same boat. Remember, we used to thrive on getting perfect attendance, first kindergarten through eighth grade, and then we got grown in high school, and then we started cutting classes and doing those things? So what are we doing? Of course, I didn't cut, no, I said, y'all. So what are we doing for our high school students? Because you indicated ninth and 12th grade. So what are we doing to encourage, to celebrate, or to motivate them to, and celebrate them to come to school?
Yes, ma'am.
Every nine weeks, what are we doing?
Yes, ma'am.
Are we doing something every?
Yes, yes. Each school does their own individualized thing. I know in particular, Westwood has, what day is it called? They have Wellness Wednesdays, where they make a big deal out of students who have good academics, who have good attendance. And the goal is for, with our high schools, to not just focus on students who have good attendance, but improved attendance as well. So anytime there is a student who has done well, they take the time to acknowledge that student, even if it's morning announcements being made. Given, what you call those little certificate things? Given the, the student certificates, we really work with our high schools to have them come up, come up with different ways to support our high schools, because they're not like elementary and middle, they're, they're a little hard to get. So you sometimes have to give them tangible things that they can hold on to. And our, our high schools do a really good job at that.
Okay, and I would like to follow up with that, with Dr. Moore later, because I would love to go and see when they're celebrating students. Because I think the high schools need to be celebrated with some ice cream or some snow cones or some popcorn or that tardy pass or something like that. So I would love to see that more in the high schools. And then I was thinking back to one of my former colleagues, when he was a principal, and worked at the district level very closely with his superintendent. For truancy, when students missed so many days, they were actually going out knocking on the door saying, "We care about you, we miss you, where are you?" Are we doing anything like that? Does that fall upon your category?
Well, it falls under, really, the, the social worker will go out.
Okay.
But it's a part of the team. So each school has to have an attendance team. And that attendance team meets to not only figure out ways to help get students into school, but to talk about each student, because, because each student has their own individualized concern. So, you know, you, you have to really figure out what's going with, what's going on with the student to be able to figure out how you need to handle their situation. So if a social worker needs to go out at that team meeting, it's discussed and decided in that meeting that the social worker may need to do a home visit, or maybe the family needs to be assessed for McKinney-Vento, which is our Homeless Education Act. It can be so many things, but all of that is discussed at that team meeting. That's why it's so important to have those attendance teams in place at each school.
And I would love to see us do that, because, and I would just call the school district, it was Orangeburg School District when Dr. Peters was actually the principal of Orangeburg-Wilkinson, and we all know how he turned that school around. But it really made a difference, because he actually went out there with the superintendent, with someone from the district office, one of his teachers, and the principal of that school. So when those students saw the key players, that spoke volumes, and that said, "We care about you." And I'll even throw in, if we ever decide to do that, as a board member, I will volunteer to do that, and I'm pretty sure other board members would do the same, because I think that speaks volumes to say that we care about you as a person. So, so thank you so much for that. Any other comments, board members? If not, thank you so much for that presentation, Dr. Suber. You're good. Thank you for, for the team, we do appreciate you guys. We would now move to item 9.3, Operations Report, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to ask Mr. Anderson, our Chief of Operations, to give an update on the status of our bonds and capital improvement projects.
Good evening, everyone, Happy New Year, I hope you had a great break. Thank you all for allowing us to give an update tonight. So first, our completed projects, this list is similar, but we have added a few at the end. Since our last update, quarterly update, we have completed Pontiac Elementary. We've completed, obviously, our Performing Arts Center, that many of you have had the opportunity to actually have a meeting in already. Blythewood Middle School was completely done, and we just opened up Spring Valley's renovations, which I'll speak more to shortly. Currently under construction, we're finishing EL Right and Center for Knowledge. I know it's been in school, but if you, we're finally finishing up a few more things there. But it's almost done. Rice Creek, this is a photo of Rice Creek, the building in the back there is the new gym space and multipurpose space. You can see it nicely sitting up atop, if you've been on Hardscrabble Road. The bus loop, the new bus loop, actually, you can kind of see at the very top of your picture where that green grass is at. That will be opening, starting next Tuesday, a week from today, we'll be opening the new bus loop. And just as an FYI, DOT has told us the road will be done, that intersection will be done this summer. And then Summit Parkway and CFI is currently under construction. Projects currently in design, Lonnie B. Nelson Middle, Westwood High Windsor. That is a image of the new fieldhouse at Westwood High School. And we are finalizing budgets and design now, with hopefully to begin construction here shortly. Projects not started with the revised budgets, I noticed a typo on Longleaf Middle, just FYI, that's one extra zero, so that's not, it's mostly $900,000. So that one zero makes a big difference. So I apologize for that, I just noticed that when I was looking at my notes. But those projects have not started, but that's where we're at on those projects right now. So quickly about Spring Valley High School. This project was four areas of construction. We started about 18 months ago with the Bates Hall, and then we worked through the Stern Fieldhouse. We started on our common areas this summer, and then really started working in June on the old multipurpose room. If you haven't been there, phenomenal, I had a chance to speak to Mr. Timoney before the meeting, and I've been over there. We were, our cabinet went to the school on last Monday, and really exciting improvements we've made for Spring Valley High School. That image is of the new Stern Fieldhouse, the exterior, which is on the old, on the soccer field. This is Bates Hall, you can see a brand-new, very large weight room facility. That's the, the large picture, the other picture is the exterior, which overlooks Harry Perron Stadium. The photo underneath it is now a large multipurpose room that can be divided into classrooms. That used to be the old small weight room at Spring Valley in Bates Hall. So it's really an amazing space. We've also had a new training room and some other locker rooms as well. In the Spring Valley Stern Fieldhouse, this is a very large, high-roof ceiling for cheer, wrestling, and multipurpose. We've also had locker rooms for spring sports in here. We have concessions, restrooms for all the sports, lacrosse, soccer, others, other sports, to have access there. As you know, at Spring Valley, the school divides the baseball fields and, and football field, and then the other fields on the other side. So we have restroom facilities and concessions on this side as well. Interior renovations, this used to be where lockers were, as well as those class, new office spaces. So as we just heard, we have many more folks in our, in our schools that are helping professionals that really help in more pullout situations. So we're creating a more open space for the, for the students, as well as more small group areas in Spring Valley, and that's on our second, first, second, third floors. And then lastly, the Spring Valley NPR renovations. This was just a large, open space that, to me, it looked like an old Kmart. It was just open with nothing in there but storage. And then, and we have turned this into eight classrooms, science room, a large divisible space. This school, if, as you know, all know, is our largest school in the district and one of the largest in the state of South Carolina with almost 2,300 students. To add eight classrooms to this space, and this place is a game changer. Mr. Timoney is so happy, since the bond passed, he asked, "When do we start, and when do we start, and when do we start?" And so it's very exciting to have this space for the, for the school. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson, and that space is a game changer. Board members, we will be doing a dedication of the fieldhouse, and you will be receiving invitations for that. We haven't scheduled it yet, but it will be forthcoming. And with that, we'll open it up for questions.
Board members, are there any questions? Discussion? Yes, Mrs. Washington?
Thank you so much, Mr. Anderson. So I, I've had a chance to see the beautiful renovations at Pontiac. And with the increased enrollment, now cafeteria is now an issue, because it's affecting lunch schedules, so students are eating later. And so I'm wondering, with all of these amazing updates, when do we expect to complete our next facility study, so that we will know our future needs as well?
As a, so, I don't have an anticipated timeline right now. Working, working on the scope of work to then work with Ms. Lee's office to get that out ASAP. So I know I've been, I've said that a couple times, but we are working very hard to get that out. I'm also really keeping an eye on what's going on in the community with the charter schools, and then what's going on with legislation, so that we have all that information to make sure our facility plan is, is correct. But as we gave a tour to the cabinet on Monday, and I've had several of my colleagues say, "I've never gone on that road," or, "Wow, that, I did not realize we had that much development happening in X part of the district." And if you've been by, it's everywhere. We went north, south, east, and west, and there's new apartments, or new homes being built everywhere. So, yes, we're on it, and we'll get an update ASAP.
Board members, any other questions? Seeing no more questions, I can come back to you, Ms. Washington.
I was just going to suggest that we do that same type of tour as a board, so that we too will have a better understanding of what's happening in our community, because I did not realize that Purcellville Road is about to be booming with houses and apartments and so many other areas. If you take us, you know, in Springwood Lake, there's some apartments coming there. There are like two or three subdivisions already. And so I would just like to suggest that we do that as a board as well.
Thank you. Mrs. Porter?
And just as an add-on to Ms. Washington, is that if you give us enough time, we'd also like to invite other elected officials in the community, so that they can see that growth as well, and it would help us in have some conversations that could benefit Richland, too.
Love to. I'm, I'm sure my partner who helped me with the other one, Dr. Grant, would love to do the tour again, and we can get Mr. Billy to be our bus driver.
Oh, I was going to ask if you were driving.
You don't want me driving, so. But we'd be happy to do that, it's a very great suggestion. And I, and I just want to, y'all saw all the work we've done. There is a lot of people that have been behind the scenes that do a lot of this work. IT, for example, Matthew works with our team all the time. So there's a ton of people that have made this happen, and I can't thank them enough. And so I just want to, you know, appreciate John Clayton, his team, IT, safety and security. All of this that goes into a building is not just our partners, but a lot of folks go into the coordination to make this happen. And so I, I'm very, very grateful for them, grateful for the school board and our community to see what we've been able to provide for our students and staff. And when you go to other districts and see what they're with and see what we've been able to accomplish, it is amazing, and so thank you all very much again.
Board members, any other questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Dennis.
Have we been seeing any, are we projected with any other delays other than the weather that's been talked about for any of these projects? Are we experiencing any with supplies right now?
The inflation's really, really big. Our biggest concern right now is, just a data point real quick for you. In FY 2023, 2024, the manufacturing sector and section, sector in the state of South Carolina was at 220, 250 million dollars worth of construction. Last year, FY 24, that rose to 1.2 billion dollars worth of construction. Probably primarily, as we all know, that's being driven by Scout and other manufacturing sectors in Richland County. So that inflation is hitting us a little harder. And then one of the things we're having more difficulty with is concrete and stone. That's all that's being worked on with the infrastructure improvements at Scout. And so right now, we don't have any other major delays, but we're working really hard with our subcontractors and contractors to, to lock in prices or, or wait to see once Scout transitions to another phase that we can get better pricing. But right now, nothing major delays that's going to hold up anything right now, Mr. Dennis.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions? I would just like to make a comment. I, I think about, I had an opportunity to actually tour a school in Rock Hill, and they had a gym, and that gym was open to employees. Now, you know, many of us have made that New Year's resolution to lose some weight. So I was just wondering if Mr. Timoney is going to be kind to let us? I'm joking, I'm joking, it's a joke, it's a joke. Okay, with that being said, I would now move on to, to item number 9.4. Very nice, yes. So 9.4 Budget Timeline. And I think some board members are willing to test that out for Mr. Timoney before they do anything. So, Dr. Moore, I pass it over to you for the budget timeline for 2025, 2026.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and speaking of New Year's resolutions, the date is coming up at the end of this week. That research shows most people will abandon their New Year's resolutions, the third, by the end of the third week in January. So, so at this point, I would like to ask our Senior Chief Financial Officer, Ms. Williams, to come forward and present the timeline for the budget for this year.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Superintendent Moore. And while we're continuing to talk about New Year's resolutions, be mindful that workers' comp would not cover employees working out in the gym during that. Just wanted to put it out there.
Public announcement, right?
But you have before you a copy of the proposed budget timeline for fiscal year 25, 26. On tomorrow, January 15th, we plan to send the budget request forms out to the departments and the school reps with a due date of February 15th, in order to provide some details on new funding requests due to compliance, new initiatives, changes in standards and the like. Then we'll be back before you on February the 11th to go over the results of the budget surveys that we sent out back in November to employees, the board, parents, and for the first time to our high school students. So we'll be back with those results. Between the middle of February and the middle of March, we will be, begin reviewing those budget request documents and holding our departmental meetings to summarize and prioritize any requests. During that same period of time, we will hold meetings with our stakeholder groups to have authentic and meaningful community engagement and give them an opportunity to provide any input that they may have into the generation of the 26 budget. input that they may have into the generation of the 26 budget. During the month of March, there will be two public input sessions at both of the March meetings. And so we'll give staff and community members an opportunity to come and share any input that they may have into the budget process for next year. And usually in early March, that's when we get our first idea of revenue projections that we will get from the state because normally by that time, the budget has been adopted by House Ways and Needs. But we won't get a true picture of, the combined picture of both state and local revenue usually until around the first week of April because that's when we'll start getting some local revenue projections. We hope to have a full initial revenue picture and a prioritized list of, of needs by the April 10th budget work session. And then when we get into April, things get really tight since spring break is, is later than usual this year. And so that budget work session is on Thursday, the April 10th. When we leave Friday, April the 11th, we have spring break the next week and then we'll, that Tuesday, we'll be back before you with first reading of the budget so that we'll have time to submit the budget request to Richland County Council by May 1st. Based upon how legislative session goes, we are hopeful to have the second and final reading on June the 10th. And if there is ever any need for additional information or clarity as we move throughout the budget process or the budget season, season, small group meetings are available upon request from the board.
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. Board members, I do want to just point out one thing on the agenda because during our feedback session from last year's budget, one of the questions that was asked was about the business community. While we've always had a large group, business advisory group, we now have a smaller group of business advisors that we meet with on a regular basis and they have been included in this discussion. So we will have business input as well as our, our traditional, so parents, teachers, NERMA, so we've added that group.
Thank you. Board members, any discussion? Mrs. Porter?
Yes, I just wanted to point out that it says date to be determined for a lot of these different groups about the budget. It would be nice before the board has their meeting to be able to see some of the results from these discussions so that we can keep that in mind when we're having our discussion. I just saw that our board one was listed before all of those.
It, it looks that way. So.
It might happen all in the same week.
High side, 2020. So they're doing that, and I should have put this additional date on there, between the, the middle of February and the middle of March, we'll have initial meetings with those same stakeholder groups to get, you know, to discuss the process, give them an opportunity to provide input so that when we meet with you for the budget workshop and first reading, we'll have that input. And so then these additional meetings with those groups is like a close the loop thing to say, you know, you've kinda indicated this was a priority, you requested this, now this is the, this is what was adopted in first reading, kinda to close the loop.
Okay, I'm not sure if this can count as a request, but I, I do wanna be a part of a small group session for the budget. So if we could plan for that.
Board members, any other questions? Discussion? CNN, thank you so much, Ms. Williams. We will now move to item 10.0, agenda items for a next meeting or a future meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next regularly scheduled board meeting is January 28th of 2025. The call to order will be at 5:30 PM, followed by approval of the agenda. Once the agenda has been approved, we will move to executive session, which will include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases. Our goal is to release back to public session at 6:30 PM. We will then have our inspirational moment and pledge of allegiance, followed by the consent agenda, approval of the consent agenda, approval of minutes from previous meeting, classified employment releases and in district transfers. Then move to public participation. Voting on executive session items will follow public participation, which would include student appeals, student admission requests into the district's adult education program, employment recommendations and certified releases, and as needed for items discussed in executive session. Next, we'll move to agenda items for the next meeting. We will look at the draft agenda for February the 11th, 2025, which will be a regularly scheduled board meeting. If needed, items will include public participation, executive session. Voting on executive session items will conclude with board and superintendent comments and adjournment.
Board members, is there anything you'd like to see on a future agenda? Mrs. Washington?
I know we've talked a lot over the course of this year so far about our career and technical education and all of the different support and opportunity for our students. I had an opportunity to go to Westwood for their career day, had a lot, wanna thank everybody who participated in that. And so I would like to know, what are we doing? I know we have our IG plans and the, you know, the path that the students are supposed to take, but for those students that decide that they don't wanna go into college, they don't choose a career, because I've met several students and, you know, nothing wrong with Mickey D's and all of that, but that's not the track for a future-ready Richland Two student. And so I would like to, and I met students and I've asked them, you know, what are you interested in, what do you plan on doing? We don't talk enough about entrepreneurship as a pathway. And I, I've met some people on your business advisory committee and they have shared the same sentiments. And so I would like to make a motion for the February 11th meeting that we cancel that meeting. No, I'm just kidding, that's my birthday. It's my birthday. But since we will be here, I would like to make a motion for the February 11th meeting that we get an update on our CATE programs and all of the different opportunities, partnerships that we offer for our students.
Board members, any other suggestions? And Dr. Washington, I was, Ms. Washington, hint, hint. I was sharing with Mrs. Porter, you must've looked at my notes because that was on my notes to ask that we get an update from the CATE department because I think I've shared many, many times that we need our students to get some type of training, the ones that are not actually going to college, especially in like welding and auto mechanics and plumbing. As a matter of fact, I just had someone out to my home from Spectrum and he was saying that he cannot find workers, so he's doing all of the work. And I said, hint, hint, you need to talk to Dr. Moore in Richland School District Two because she may be able to, you know, get some interns. And he's like, well, as long as they're 18 and they can pass a, a background check. But you know, we have that out there and we need to prepare our students. And one other concern I have is, I love going over to Richland Northeast High School in the cosmetology program. I haven't forgotten, you guys, I am coming to get that hairdo. But with that, we need to have an opportunity for students to have that in this building, which I will begin to campaign, not for the school board, campaigning for students because there are so many students at other schools who say, why do we have to pay money when we graduate from Richland Two to go to cosmetology school when we could've gotten it for free? So you will see in Hear Me Campaign for Welding and for Cosmetology in this building, in HVAC, I was getting to that, you, stop looking at my notes, in HVAC in this building, when? When do you, next year, this next school year, because it is possible and we can make it happen. Well, close to it. We can make it happen some kinda way for our students where they should not be going somewhere for cosmetology and for welding and some of those jobs. So I think we just need to put our feet to the fire and find some kinda innovative ways to allow those students who want to be barbers and cosmetologists, and if it's not at their school, we need to figure out some kinda way, even if we get some of those barbers and those cosmetology people to come here on certain days, semesters or something, but I'm gonna make it happen. And also with CNA, yes, Dr. Moore, we're gonna figure out a way to make it happen. Ridgeview High School, ever since I worked at Ridgeview High School, and I haven't been at Ridgeview in a long time, I was there from 2007 into 2012. And we always had a list, almost as long as Two Notch Road, of people wanting to get certified in CNA. That should not happen when we have all of these high schools and we have this building, which was actually designed and former board members voted for this building to house those things. Then when the board changed, they go back and changed the vote to house other things. I was on this board, yes, I was one of those board members on this board that voted for R2I2 to house cosmetology, welding, CNA and some other things. Then we changed the board and then, and superintendent, and then they changed and voted for certain things. We are here for all students and if we really say we are here for all students, then we give all students an opportunity to be successful. So students, listen up. If you are interested in those careers, come to the board meeting. Voice your opinion. Voice your opinion. We need to hear from you. CNA, barbering, cosmetology, HVAC, welding, come to the board because we make everything else happen, we can make this happen. We can figure out how to make it happen. If we truly say we're here for students, because you know, we love to say that, it's all about the kids, it's all about the students, well, put your money where your mouth is. Okay? So you will see me this year campaigning for those activities. So thank you so much. I see Dr. Moore just looking at me. I don't see you looking at me, Dr. Moore, look over there, look over there, Dr. Moore. But anyway, so with that being said. With that being said, any other additions we would like to add, board members? If not, yes. Absolutely. Ms. Washington, your motion?
I moved that we add an update on the CATE programs and different partnerships that offer our students through February 11th, 2025.
Okay, that was Mrs. Washington's motion. Is there a second? Second. The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Nash. Is there any discussion? Board members, any discussion? The vote is seven yes, zero no, the motion passes. We will now move to item 14.0, board and superintendent comments. We will start with Mr. Trapp.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had a workshop last week and there was a couple of things that I wanted to share with the public. We just, I, I really enjoyed our morning session. We had a, oh gosh, Dr. Pritzl.
Dr. Peters. And Pritzl.
Yes, yes. Anyway, they were there and, and they gave us out some things that, you know, some cert, some, we did a questionnaire to see how well we knew each other. And I just wanna share a little bit off of that questionnaire. You know, Clint Eastwood did a movie one time called The Good, The Bad and The Ugly. And, you know, usually those three things are present everywhere we go. But all I wanna, I wanna share with you is one of the good things that I gathered from this, and it goes right along with this month's board appreciation. The fact it's a board appreciation month. The question that was asked, and this person answered this question in reference to me, the question was, name one thing this person could do or say that would make your day. And the response was, what they would like to hear is, I appreciate you. And, and you know, I, I wanna, too often, we don't express our appreciation of people and it doesn't matter who you are, how much money you have or what you do, all of us can express appreciation. And I do want to tell my fellow board members, especially the one that wrote that, I, I do appreciate the things you do. I don't always agree with, with what we all do in here and that's okay. We're, if we all agreed, I would be worried, but I, I appreciate, I appreciate my board, fellow board members and I, I'm gonna do my best to express that appreciation more in the future. I also would like to express it, I'd like to be able to speak clearer, but I'd, I'd like to express my appreciation to our, our teachers as well. And I'll, I'll tell you a, a real quick story on, on why I can say that with authority. I've mentioned in the past that me and my wife teach a class, it's our fourth year to teach high school students, a church class in our home. And my wife is the teacher, I'm kinda the technical guy, I like to think of myself, I do what Tony does for us here. I, I try to put the stuff on the screen and, and everything and try to keep the sound right. But every now and then, my wife will be sick or something and I end up teaching. And let me tell you what I've learned, I stink as a teacher, okay? I am awful, I, I, anyway. And, and of course, I think the only thing the students get out of a lesson that I teach is a great appreciation from my wife. But I really, when I say that I appreciate our teachers, I, let me, that comes from the bottom of my heart because I, I've watched my wife over the last couple of years really put so much effort into preparing these lessons and everything. And if our teachers in our schools spend as much time preparing their lessons as my wife does, they don't have a life outside of teaching. And, and I, I know a lot of them do and we really appreciate that. It, it takes a great deal of, well, it takes a great deal of love. You have to love these children to put that kinda time into it and that kinda effort into it because you don't get love back all the time. You get a lot of rejection, you know, even, even in our little class in the mornings, we have a lot of, we have, I'm sorry, we have a couple of people that don't really pay attention. I gotta be more positive, okay? But you, you know, it, sometimes it's frustrating and I really appreciate the teachers. But being the, being the sidekick that I am to my wife, I have to also tell our support staff, we couldn't do it without you. I, I, because that's kinda who I am. I'm a, not only, you know, in my little thing I'm talking about, but in life, I, I, that's what I do. I support education and stuff. A lot of the work I do is for University of South Carolina and before I was elected to the board, I did a little bit of work at the school district. And we can't have buildings, we can't have running water in our buildings, we can't have food in our cafeterias and everything without our support staff. We can't have clean restrooms, our, our custodians and everything. And I wanna say, I appreciate everything everybody here does because it, it's just a, it's, it's, it takes a lot of work to make this machine move. The last thing I would like to mention, let's see if I can do this without getting things mixed up. The legislative session started today, I think. I know it's this week, but I'm pretty sure it's today, it started back. And I, I for one, I'm actually excited about some of the stuff we, I would like to, to point out that our very own Dr. Helen Grant, her son is one of our county representatives. And I'm excited to say that he is on the education committee. So we, we are really looking forward, I'm not putting him on the spot, I hope, but we're really looking forward to getting, to getting some really good results and maybe we'll get, maybe we'll be in his ear a little bit, I don't know. But we're really looking forward to this legislative session and I, I know over the last couple of years, I've got to know several representatives and senators a little better and I'm really hoping that this will be a real good year for our legislation in our schools. I know there's several things coming down the pipes that are very positive, I think. And I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing those good things happen. And y'all have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Trapp. In great way because you are the legislator person for Richland Two School Board. So I'm glad you said that because we're looking excited about having you to go there and make those relationships and get some things done for Richland Two. So we'll talk about that a little later. So we now move to Mrs. Williams.
Happy New Year, everyone. As we come back this year, I just wanna say, I really enjoyed the board workshop that we had the other day as well. Very reflective session for a lot of us in team building and getting to know one, getting to know one another and how we work with each other. I think that was very helpful to us and the work that we're going to do to move forward because in order for us to be effective for our community, our students and everyone else, we have to be able to work together as a board and I think that was very helpful for us. Dr. Peters, who was one of our presenters, Stephen Peters, he said something that really resonated with me that was one of the reasons. He said, honor the work and be faithful to the work. And I just want us as a board to remember and as employees of the district as well, is that the work we do, just honor it. And then whatever we set our, what we set out to do, continue to see it through and be faithful. And then we will see great rewards in the end. Again, I appreciate everyone. Thank you, board members. It's a pleasure to getting to know each one of you all, especially as a new member. And I've enjoyed so far my time and I look forward to many more amazing moments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
So I want to say, welcome back to everyone. And happy School Board Appreciation Month to my colleagues. Last week was probably my favorite board work session, thanks to all of the wonderful conversations. And it was a refreshing way for us to kick off 2025. Definitely want to give a shout out to football player Will Wilson, senior at Richland Northeast High School, for being named Mr. Football of the State of South Carolina. Go Cavaliers. Thank you also to our amazing attendance team for all of your hard work. Dr. Suber and your entire team. You all are valued and much appreciated for putting our students first. Mr. Anderson and your entire team and everyone who put their boots to the ground. Thank you all so much for just those, it's nice to drive by and see a lot of those updates and the shiny new buildings. So thank you all so much. I want to say thank you to our partners Be Smart for advocating for gun safety. I watch the news a lot, and that has been something that has just been very heavy over the past couple of weeks, actually, for the past couple of months. So I wanted to just say this little public service announcement. Parents and students, I want to encourage you and remind you to be smart. Secure your guns. Model responsible behavior. Parents, please ask about the presence of guns in the homes where your students are going. Recognize the role of guns, and students, tell your peers to be smart. And as our inspirational speaker said tonight, "I want to see you tomorrow." You all have a great evening, and thank you so much to all of our entire Richland School District II community for all you do. Thanks.
Thank you, Mrs. Washington. Ms. Nash?
Happy New Year. To everybody watching online, as always, thank you guys for being here with us and y'all for being here with us. Yeah, the board workshop was really a lot of fun. And my team won Family Feud, go team. I felt like we should have had more points, but they took some from us, even though we knew our answers were right, right, team? But also, I enjoyed the getting to know you portion as well. There were some really great answers. I realize that my, my board members here do know that I love chocolate. So on Valentine's Day, I expect this desk to be full with premium chocolate. And also, when asked what movie I would star in, they said Batman. And I was like, duh. So that was wonderful, too. And then I want to like end with something that I read every year. And it's a little story, and I do color it a little bit myself, because this is written like a while back. But it's called, "What Kind of People Live Here?" And it goes, "A stranger and his wife stopped at a village and spoke to one of the inhabitants who were at the gate of the city. And he says, 'What kind of people live here?'" the man asked. And he says, "'I have a mind to settle here. What kind of people lived here before, at the place you lived before,' inquired the villager, the person who's at the gate. And he says, "'Oh, in the town I came from, the people were mean, narrow, and awful.'" And so the man who's at the gate says, "'Well, then I'm sorry, that's just the kind of people you're going to find here.'" The stranger drove on, and sometime later, another stranger came along to the same gate and asked the same villager about the kind of people that were in that village. And he says, "'What kind of people, people did you live with before?' And the villager said, who was at the gate, "'The finest in the world,' the stranger said with a smile. "Only business reasons forced me to leave.'" And then the villager who was at the gate said, "'You'll find the same kind of people here.'" And I think about that every year, because whatever you expect, whether it's the first person that you meet, if you go into it with the expectation that it's going to be good, nine times out of 10, it's going to be good. And either way, you're going to come out winning if your expectation is that, no matter what, it's going to be good for you. And so I just want to encourage everybody to have a great year and have great expectations that we're going to have a great year. Have a great night, everybody.
Boy, that workshop has really been working. Okay. So we'll go to Mr. Dennis.
Yes, I had a nice little thing prepared that I was going to say. Unfortunately, tonight, though, I'm going in a little different direction. I'm going to plead with the public out there. Please look after these kids. You know what's right, you know what's wrong. And I'm not talking to just the parents. I'm talking to everybody out there. Being on a board is hard. And putting your heart out there for these kids is even harder. So please, I'm asking the community's help to help with gun violence, help with the fighting, help with everything else. Because it's not just about what we're doing here. It's not just happening in the schools, it's happening everywhere else. It's not just in the schools, it's happening out there. So please, please, everybody in this community of Richland II and across the state of South Carolina and this nation, you know what's right and wrong. Let's do and teach these kids right from wrong. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Dennis. And Ms. Porter.
Thank you, Mr. Kenfall, for the inspiration. Thank you, colleagues, for everything that you do and your contributions to this board. During our workshop, it was even more obvious that we all, we all do this from a different place in our hearts. And you're, just all of your contributions is very much appreciated. So thank you so much. Thank you for the recognition today for SESBA Director's Retreat. Mr. Trapp, we might need to work together some, because they placed me on the Legislative Committee. So I might be tapping your shoulder. And then also the Nomination Committee at our Board of Directors Retreat. So that's a little information for my colleagues. Also, upon reflection of things that have been happening over the break and into the new year, I wanted to share that our students need support, and not just in school, but they also need support at home. Idle time, you know, the saying with idle time leads to an idle mind and so on. It's currently that time for our parents to start registering your students for camps. I say, go ahead and get ahead of that, so that your child has something to do over the summer and during the spring breaks and so forth. Richland II offers a TRIDAC camp for our middle schoolers. I have a special, there's a special place in my heart for middle school students and their teachers. And TRIDAC arts, creative writing, and even with our instruments and so forth. It's a phenomenal camp that our district hosts with two other districts over the summer. But now's the time to start signing up for those things. Start looking for camps, start sharing. Whatever camps you hear about, please share them with me, so that I can post it, so that we have plenty to offer and share with the community. Extracurricular activities will help with giving our students something to do. It helps them with a healthy mind and healthy bodies. But I think it would help with some of the issues that I'm seeing today. January 31st is the deadline for job shadowing in our middle schools. We were talking about how the community can help and how businesses can help. When you talk to someone that you know that could possibly be an opportunity for a student, share with them that our middle schoolers will be looking for job shadowing opportunities on February 7th. And so that's one way that you could contribute, is by allowing a middle schooler job shadow you. And that's all that I have. Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Porter. Dr. Moore?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And Happy New Year to everyone. You know, we have not had a meeting since the middle of December, and it seems like forever. But I am very excited about the possibilities that this year holds for our district. I want to first start off with, January is Board Appreciation Month, and we will be doing celebrations at the next board meeting. But if you see our board members out and about, thank them for their commitment to our students, because we greatly appreciate that. Also, as a part of the board, congratulations to Ms. Porter again for her selection as the Region Eight Director. We appreciate that. I always like us to have a seat at the table, so we can set the agenda. Now, we, Mr. Anderson already talked about this, but we started the year doing a tour of our schools alongside our county. Because most of us did not realize just how large the county actually is when you drive it. We know it from the square footage and all of that data. But also, it gave some individuals who work in the district office but don't necessarily have the opportunity to get to schools to go out and firsthand experience schools. So the bus tour was excellent, and I'm so happy that Ms. Washington said this is something the board, because I had already spoken with Dr. Grant about that possibility. And so we will definitely get that scheduled. But as you can see from the video, there is just a lot of great and wonderful things happening in our schools. And we are very excited about what everyone is doing to ensure that we give our students the best environment for learning as well as the best learning opportunities for them. So last week, we had our wintery mix of weather. For those of you that are not meteorologists like me, I had to look up that term, wintery mix, because I'd never heard that. Born and raised in the north, we had snow. Living in Florida, we had sunshine. There was no wintery mix. But I learned that here. And I have to say that the decision that we made was the right decision. But that decision was based on the hard work of our team. And so I want to publicly thank our administrators, our teachers, our staff for handling that situation with professionalism and ensuring the safety of our students. Unfortunately, there'll probably be some more weather events coming up. But once again, we will do everything that we need to do to ensure that we keep our, not just our students, but our staff, safe also when those, and now I know what wintery mix means. Last night, had the privilege of participating in the reimagined Richland County event alongside our county administrator, Leonardo Brown. Now, if you didn't have a chance to do this, this plan has been 10 years in the making, and its success really depends on everyone in the community coming together. It was an inspiring gathering focused on shaping the, a bright future for our community. And I am proud of the role our district plays in these efforts, because they're looking at, how do we redesign Richland County to better serve our community? We also started Effective January 1st, Free to Focus, which I know everybody is very excited about. And so today, WLTX went to Westwood High School to film a segment on the successful launch of Free to Focus. It featured students and teachers, and a teacher from Westwood. That teacher is a second-year teacher. She started the year with a classroom management plan that included Free to Focus before Free to Focus became the, the way to do it, before it did. And Dr. Scott, you know what I mean. It's classroom management that it comes down to. That story has already aired on WLTX while we were in our board meeting. But we're very excited and grateful to celebrate the work that we've been doing in the community for that. Also, we have some wonderful news to share. Congratulations to Kirsten Bullington, an educator at the Student Intervention Center, on being selected by the White House for the Presidential Award for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching, which is P-A-E-M-S-T is the abbreviation, in the science category for South Carolina. This is an incredible achievement and a testament to the impact that she has made in teaching and advancing science, technology, engineering, and math. The honor also comes with a $10,000 award. So congratulations. Now, just so everybody knows, since 1985, Richland II has had six science and four math teachers to win the Presidential Awards for Excellence in Mathematics and Science Teaching. So the last P-A-E-M-S-T winner was Ridgeview High School Science Teacher, Dr. David Dengrenhardt, I did practice that, who received, excuse me, the teaching honor in 2019. Warren Wise at Kelly Mill was a finalist in 2021. And so in closing, looking ahead, I am once again, as I said, filled with excitement for the opportunities this year that we'll, we will experience together as we continue to empower our educators to pursue purpose-driven and to ensure that our students are future-ready. And that ties right into the work that we did during our board workshop. And I want to commend the board chair for organizing that and being bold enough to say, this is work that we need to do as a board to ensure that we're doing right by our students. So as a result of that, I have no doubt that 2025 will be a remarkable year for Richland District II. And I am grateful for the, for the board's ongoing support as well as the community in making our vision a reality. So with that, thank you, Dr. Scott. And I will turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. My colleagues, basically, that's the bad thing about going live sometimes, that they've said everything. But I'm going to just repeat a few. And the first thing, Happy New Year. Welcome back, glad to see everyone, bright eyes and bushy tail. I'm going to start with Free to Focus. Had an opportunity to talk with one of my relatives and one of the neighbors. They're not happy about it. But the great thing is, they said to me, "Can you believe people are following the rules?" That's all I needed to hear. So thank you to the high school principals and the middle school principals and the elementary principals, support staff. Thank you to everyone. Because they may not like it, but they are following the rules. So thank you for your purpose-driven, future-ready leadership. Want to say that. Also, under my leadership as the board chair, team building is just it. I mean, you can't move forward and you can't get things done until you understand that first, everyone comes with different personalities. Everyone have a different focus on what they want to focus on, like Kate for me. School safety, it could be other things for the other people. But until we come together and lay it on the table and then understand that we can agree to disagree. So I am so excited that my board members have allowed me to take the lead to have these workshops. And I do have one more that's about team building. Because I think when you start that, then whoever comes next, at least it will be an easier and smoother transition. We may have already laid out some of the foundations. So I think that's great. So I want to say to my colleagues, thank you for giving me the opportunity to lead in the team building. Also, we know that it's Board Appreciation Month. So thank you to each and every one of the board members. I appreciate all of you, whether we agree or disagree. I still appreciate you, because your ideas make me rethink some of the things that I'm thinking. And then we have been able to come to the table and agree to disagree and to move forward for the best interest of all our students. Want to say that. And then also, I want to say thank you to Nate Kenfall. Thank you so much for that heartfelt story that you shared. And he only shared just a portion, but it meant so much to me that my mom played a part in his success. But more so, not so much about my mom, just for us to understand that everyone in the school is important. And it starts with our bus drivers, because they're the first people to see our students each and every morning. And we don't know what they may have said to the student to make sure you have a great day. You know, so, you know, you need to thank bus drivers. Not doing bus appreciation week or month every single day. One, for getting students there safe. And then two, they may have just covered those students before they've gotten into your classroom. So I want to say thank you to the bus drivers. Also, I want to just take a moment of silence for the loss of Mrs. Regina Harry. She worked at Ridgeview High School, and I had an opportunity to work with her. And it was such a kind, sweet, loving person. Someone who truly cared about all of our students. Someone who came in early and stayed late. Someone that the students respected and was also considered the school mom. So if we can just take a moment for the Harry family, the Ridgeview family, and just the community, please. Thank you so much for that. And also, want to say thank you to Dr. Suber and your team. You guys did an awesome You guys did an awesome job. Thank you. I didn't have too many questions, Dr. Suber, so that means you guys were on point for what you needed to do, because you know when you get up there, you're thinking, oh, what is she getting ready to do? But when you do so much, you keep my mouth closed. So thank you so much. Want to say thank you to Will Anderson for your presentation as well. And Ms. Williams, thank you for the timeline. And just thank you for everyone who's here this evening, those who are online. We really appreciate everything that you do. Also, Mrs. Porter, I'm so excited for you, because, Ms. Porter, sometimes she, she has her leadership and her ability to take the lead. So I'm so glad that she stepped out of her comfort zone and ran for the Region Eight School Board, Region Eight Director. Go ahead, Ms. Porter. So thank you so much for that, and we know you're going to do a fabulous job. And I know many of you are looking at me with my bling bling on. I know. I know you're looking at me and just keep looking, because to the Alpha Kappa Alpha ladies, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated, I thought I would just dress a little bling bling in pink for you. Early day. Happy early Founder's Day to all the beautiful ladies. The first and the finest Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. With that being said, I would like to have a motion for adjournment.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. Washington?
I move to adjourn the January 14th, 2025 Regular Board Meeting.
The motion has been made to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been made by Mrs. Washington and seconded by Mrs. Porter. All in favor, raise your right hand. Seven yes, zero no. The meeting is adjourned. Good night.